Hello, everybody, and welcome to this evening's presentation about the proposed changes to Green Belt, City of Green Belt Solid Waste Collection, the pilot program of Save As You Throw. I'm going to sort of enter, I'll go through the agenda and then we will, if I can get it to advance my slides. Come on. I don't know why. Well, it's not wanting to advance the slides that way. Hopefully you can, can you still see the slides?
Yes.
It's just not in presenter mode. I'm not sure quite why it wasn't advancing my slides. I'll try to fix that in a moment. But so we're going to have Mayor Jordan give some opening remarks. And then City Manager Samaron will talk a little bit about some of the rationale and the reasoning behind this. And then we'll give a presentation explaining the process. So I'm Mayor Protem Weaver, and I'm the liaison for the Green Aces, the Green Aces Advisory Board, so have been working very closely with them to present it to council. So I'll give a bit of a background. And then Dr. Luisa Robles and John Lippard and Jane Young from the Green Aces team will present the basic idea and how this all works. And then, and we also have Mark Dancy from Waste Zero. If, and then the big part of this is we want people to be able to ask questions. So that's just sort of a bit of an overview. We know people have lots of questions. Hopefully, some of those will be answered by the presentation, but of course, if there are anything that come up, you can put them in the Q and A, and we will also have the opportunity, if you want to speak up and ask your questions that way. So I am going to stop my share and let Mr. Samaron share his screen for his background information.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember, but Mayor Protem Weaver. Mayor Jordan, do you want to do the welcome?
Well, sure. Good evening, Green Belters. Thank you for joining us tonight for this important virtual town hall. On behalf of Green Belt City Council, I welcome you. Tonight, we come together to discuss a new chapter in Green Belt's journey towards sustainability, the Save As You Throw pilot project. This pilot project is more than just an update to our city's waste management. It's an invitation for each resident to participate in building a greener, more resilient Green Belt. Currently, our solid waste program faces real financial and environmental challenges, operating at a significant annual deficit, and also contending with rising landfill fees. For years, the city has subsidized waste collection for some sections of the city from its general revenue, which puts stress on other essential services and our long-term financial health. So Save As You Throw means just that, the cost of trash removal will reflect what each of our households actually use. The less you throw away, the more you save. And for those who prefer, there's an opt-out for a fixed convenience fee, so no one is forced into a model that doesn't fit their needs. I want to acknowledge the leadership of our Green Belt Advisory Committee for Sustainability, for their leadership in conceiving and introducing this initiative. And I just want to say that, I want to emphasize that this, this is your city, your voices matter. And tonight's dialogue will help shape the final details of the Save As You Throw pilot project in Green Belt. So at this time, I would like to introduce our city manager, Will Sway Somarong, who will provide a more in-depth overview of the program.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, everyone. I'm really excited to see so many folks have joined today. We've got 96 up on the, on the counter. So this is really exciting to have so many of you join us tonight. The video is being recorded. We'll make it available for offline viewing. And this is not the only place to ask questions. Obviously, we'll have several months before the implementation of any program. Council will still have to go through its formal hearing process for any changes. But we wanted, we wanted to have this town hall because the proposal is still, it's being formally submitted again for council's approval at the upcoming meeting. And we'll have several months of outreach efforts to ensure that the public is aware of the changes. But let me start with my presentation. I am, I have a brief presentation, just to give you the why. It really expands on what Mayor Jordan has just shared, that we are facing some challenges in the current operations of the program. Mayor Protem Weaver, are you able to see my screen?
Yes, looks good.
Excellent. So this is the background on the why. Why are we doing this? We're not trying to be difficult. So city manager is not going out of his way trying to make, make our solid waste program difficult. On the contrary, we need to, we want to make it better. We want to solve some structural financial challenges. And they are that in 2024, the general fund subsidized waste collection by $270,000 to cover operating expenses. A lot of this, this deficit is due to rising costs. The county has raised tipping fees from $70 per tonne to $85 per tonne effective July 1st of 2025. So a month ago, the new fee went into place, and we were advised almost a year ago that the fee would continue to increase in the years to come. And on July 1st of 2026, the tipping fee is going to go to $90 per tonne. So that is going to increase our costs, just if nothing changes. If we continue to collect solid waste at the same amounts as we have been collecting, the tipping fee will increase at an annual cost of $132,000, starting July 1 of 2025. And when the rate increases to $85 per tonne, that's 187, sorry, $139,770 for the year. So these are, these are significant expenses. We, the, the current structure is not, is not sustainable. For the fiscal year 2026, which started just July 1st, we are projecting to run a deficit of $279,000. That represents about a 37% funding gap from the revenues we collect to the expenses that it costs us to run the program. The, in the 2026 budget, council approved a rate change that would bring, bring in an additional $50,000 in FY 2026. And part of the, but that doesn't kick in until January 1 of 2026. So council wanted us to take the, the time to figure out the right program that would bring in that additional revenue to make the program more sustainable. And that's what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about the Save As You Throw. Initially, when council, when we discussed the, the structure issues at the council meeting, this is the, the financial data we presented. So the deficit has been a growing deficit. And part of that is due to just increasing costs, personnel costs increased every year. We want to, we want to pay fair wages and market wages, and we have to keep up with the market. Or also our, our transportation costs have increased, or that's vehicle maintenance or fuel expense. All of those things have gone up, and now the tipping fees have gone up. And our rates are the, the amount of money that we charge for waste collection hasn't changed in nine years, in over nine years. So, you know, basic math there, right? The rate hasn't changed in nine years, but everything else, all our costs have changed. So that's why we're having that growing deficit. We also have several different rates in our program. These are just four examples out of 18 different rates that we charge. So we also want to, we want to simplify that. 18 rates is a lot when work. We'll be doing some changes to simplify that. But here are the four most common rates that we charge. Residential rate at 280 per year. We have a business rate that is the same rate as the residential. And there's, that's $280 per year. And then we have this higher volume business rate 3, that's 814. And we charge, we have a special account just for churches. So just a church fee is 335. So these are, these rates are pretty, are low. When we compare them to surrounding municipalities, just looking at the county level, Montgomery County's rate is $594. Prince George's County rate is $356 per year, and that's also set to increase. Anarondo County is 298, and the city of Rockville is $503 per year. And I'll tell you, while these rates are higher, I think that Green Belt has the best waste collection services, hands down. I think we're the best at the business. You know, I'm amazed that, you know, I oftentimes forget when, when trash pickup is because I have a closet just for my trash outside my home, and it gets picked up out of that closet. And I think that's the case for, for most of us. So we just have amazing services. And even with the rate increase that we, we had proposed in the initial budget process of getting us to 336, that is significantly lower than Prince George's County, Montgomery County, and City of Rockville charges. So I think that the, even with the increase, we're still creating a lot of value for residents through our waste collection. Now, we'll, we'll, we'll get into the details of the Pay As You, Save As You Throw program. That, that rate is structured a bit different from what I have just shown. But Mayor Protem Weaver and the team will get into the details.
Thank you, Mr. Samaron. So I am going to, first of all, just to share a little bit about sort of the, the timeline of things. That presentation that, that was, you were just shown was sort of part of that proposal, that the discussion on March 3rd, talking about the need to make some changes. Also during that timeframe, in March and April, the Green Belt Advisory Committee for Environmental Sustainability had some presentations and discussions with Waste Zero, a B Corp that is, that facilitates these processes in a number of different communities, specifically in the Northeast, but looking to expand into Maryland. And so that led, those discussions with Green Aces led to a formal proposal recommendation to city council to look at this program. We had a work session on May 5th, and then on June 2nd, as part of the, as part of the budget adoption, the, including that, that proposed increase to 336, which as, you know, as Mr. Samaron noted, that doesn't actually, the, the proposed rate as in the budget wouldn't actually cover our gap. And so we included some of those assumptions with the assumption, with the, the hope to be able to start this, this new program, January 1st, partially to accommodate the Greenbelt Homes Incorporated budget cycle, because we know that was a challenge. Then on the 16th, we had another meeting talking about this and, and, and voting sort of on the rate structure that you'll be presented with today. July 14th, we sort of had some initial draft resolutions, but we pulled those back to get some, to clarify some of the language. And so we're here, there, at, at August 7th, today, talking to you all in this town hall to get some feedback. We will have other opportunities. We will be recording this. And we also have, I think the, the city staff is creating a landing page so that we can have questions, the common questions posted there as well. So that's where we are to get feedback. Then the proposed first reading of a resolution will be on Monday, so we won't have discussion on that. Then a second reading on this, and hopefully passage on September 8th. Then the plan is from September through December, that's the period where we make sure that everybody knows about these processes, continued outreach, as well as training of the public work staff and some of the, the new procedures. Then the implementation will start January 1st. And then throughout 2026, we would make sure that we're evaluating the effectiveness of, of the program and making sure that it's serving, serving our needs. And if any changes need to be made or anything as part of that, because it is intended to be a pilot. I think we hope that it works well. We hope that it reduces the city's trash as well, which then reduces our fees, but also is something that helps residents who want to save money by reducing their own trash production. So that's sort of the timeline. And I will then now switch to, to Dr. Robles and John and Jane to tell, to tell, to get, sort of give the details. So if you want to, just let me know when you want me to advance slides.
Okay. So hi, everyone. Today, we're going to discuss what Save As You Throw is. And it's a city-provided trash and recycling collection. We're going to explain how it works. Next slide. So it's a unit-based pricing system, which means that you pay according to how much you generate. It's, it's been shown that it reduces waste going to the landfill by about 44%. It's done in major cities throughout the world, and it's in thousands, thousands of communities here in the United States, including all of Minnesota, half of Massachusetts, and New England. It goes by all different types of names. You'll see the names listed here, unit-based pricing, fair trash reduction, pay-as-you-throw, waste metering, smart, save money and reduce trash. And we decided to go with Save As You Throw or Say It. Next slide, please.
But who, who, who?
So who would this impact? Greenbelt households who get their trash collected by city staff every week.
And what, what, what?
So what is this new system? It's a different way to pay for your city-provided trash and recycling collection and disposal. So as I mentioned, we call it Save As You Throw, or you can abbreviate it and say, Say It. Next slide.
And when, when, when?
As it was mentioned, the new payment system will begin on January 1, 2026. So we have a little bit of time before this starts. Next slide.
And where, where, where?
So you have to understand who's impacted by this. Only households that have city-provided trash and recycling collection and disposal. That means all of GHI and a number of single-family homes that get city-provided service. Luisa, what are some of those?
So some of those are Boxwood, Lakewood, Greenbrier 1 and 2, Greenbelt Community Lake, I forget the name of that one, and just, just a few number of HOAs that the city services directly.
So if the city is the one that picks up your trash, it impacts you. But it will not impact you if you live in an apartment, or if you live in a home that has a private provider that picks up your trash. Next slide, please.
But why, why, why?
Well, as was mentioned earlier, we're trying to help you save on your trash and recycling collection fees. We want to reduce the waste going to the landfill, and of course, reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that come from landfills. And as was very well explained by our city manager, we want to reduce the deficit that the city is incurring to provide this service. Next slide, please. Okay, so a lot of this has already been discussed by our city manager. Fees are going up, we've run a deficit. Um, the landfill prices are going up. I just want to mention that, well, why are the landfill prices going up that the county is charging us? It's because the landfill is filling up. And so we must all do our part to reduce the amount of trash we generate, because it's just going to get more expensive to landfill our garbage. Next slide, please.
But how, how, how?
So the current system, as was explained, charges $280 a year for trash and recycling, recycling collection and disposal. That's for every single person that gets this service. It's the same whether you generate a lot of trash or whether or not you're, you're being very conscientious and trying to not produce much trash. It's just not fair. Those that only produce a little bit of trash are paying the same amount as those that generate a large amount of trash. So in order to make this, this system more equitable, the city decided to implement a unit-based system that we call Save It. Now, you currently pay 280 a year, as, as was mentioned. And in order to fill that gap that was mentioned before, the city needs to collect about $400 a year just to break even. So keep that in mind. Next slide, please.
Can you give us details, please?
So the way it's going to work is this. Everyone will pay a base yearly fee of $240. Now, that's lower than the 280 that you've been paying year after year for the past about nine years. And there's another component. Next slide, please. You'll have two choices. You can do Save As You Throw. Again, you pay your 240 base fee a year. But you'll have special city-approved bags that you'll have to purchase at local retailers in order to participate in Save As You Throw. And an example, say you need to buy one small bag and put it out every single week of the year. That small bag will cost $41.60 a year. Luisa is showing, it's, we call it a small bag, but we don't even, Jane and I don't even use that much in most, most weeks. That's, that's considered a small bag. It's eight gallon. And if you buy that and use it, use one of those every single week, it would cost you $41.60. So with the base fee of 240, your total would come to 281.60. That's a dollar and 60 cents more than you're actually paying right now and have been paying for years. Or the other option is to go with a Max Trash sticker. Again, the base fee is still 240. It's the same for everybody. But you will be required to purchase a Max Trash sticker for $140. So that'll make your total $380 a year, plus the cost of whatever bag you use, because you'll be using your own bags. You won't be buying city-approved bags. Next slide, please. So if you want to participate in the Save As You Throw bag purchase option, there'll be three bags available that you can purchase. The green one here, they'll be different colors. They'll have our logo, but this gives you an idea of the size. The green one here is a small eight-gallon one, and it will cost 80 cents per bag. This one is medium 13-gallon, and it will cost $1.25 per bag. And the large bag, see how large that one is? It's a 33-gallon bag, and it will cost $2 per bag. So you pay for trash pickup by buying city-approved bags in the Save As You Throw program instead of buying regular bags at your local store. It's up to you. You buy and use as many bags, whichever size you need each week. So if it turns out that you don't have that much trash and you want, and your, even your small bag isn't getting filled, and you can keep it, don't put anything out that week, and you can keep it till the next week. But you decide if you need a small bag, a medium bag, or a large bag, and that's what you purchase, and that's what you put out. Now, the city gets its revenue from the base fee, the 240. But for those who do Save As You Throw, the city will get an additional revenue. Most of the money from the sale of the city-approved bags will go back to the city. So it's getting, if the city's getting paid by your, your 240 a year base fee, plus most of the money from the purchase of these bags. Next slide, please. So you want to save money? Well, as I mentioned before, put smaller bags out. Don't put as many bags out. If you don't need to put anything out that week, you won't have to put one of these bags out. It's up to you. Of course, reducing the number of bags going with smaller bags will cost you less. So how do you do that? Well, put all the recyclables into your recycling bin. Do you ever, do you or anyone in your family ever put recyclables, say, soda cans or soda bottles or things like that into the trash? Because it's just more convenient than try to figure out what goes into the recycling bin? If it's recyclable, put it into the recycling bin. There's no charge for the recycling. It, it, it will be picked up, and it's exactly the way it's always been. If you have food scraps, compost them. The City of Greenbelt offers a number of different avenues to compost your food scraps, and we are here to help you figure out which might be best for you. We're here to help. Buy products with minimal packaging or recyclable packaging. And if you have donateable items, don't just throw them in the trash. Donate them, and that'll keep you from buying more bags to put out for the trash and save you money.
Yeah, to donate, you can use Buy Nothing Green Belt, Free Cycle, take them to the thrift store. There's a whole slew of options posted on the website, or you can always email me or call me.
Next slide, please. Any questions?
If I participate in Say It, how much will it cost me?
Next slide, please. Excellent question. Okay, let's figure this out. If you put one small bag out every single week of the year, that bag plus the 240 a year base fee will cost you $281.60 a year, like I mentioned earlier. So that's costing you $1.60 more than what you've been paying a year. If you buy one medium bag each and every week and put that out, it will cost you $305 a year, the base fee plus the cost of the medium bag, 305 a year. If you buy one medium and one small bag each week, it will cost $346.60 a year. If you buy one large bag each week, it will cost $344 a year. But these are examples. You don't have to do one small or one medium or one medium and one small. Mix it up. It's up to you for what, it depends upon your need, and you go out and buy whichever bags you need for that particular week or that particular month. Next slide, please.
What if I choose the Max Trash sticker option?
Next slide, please. If you choose the Max slash Max Trash sticker option, so in addition, you'll pay, like everybody else, you'll pay the 240 a year base fee. But in addition, you'll have to purchase a Max Trash sticker for $140 a year, for a total of 380 a year, $380 annually. So this will allow you to continue putting out your trash, as you have in the past, in your own trash bags of your choosing. Now, just remember, in addition, you know, I put $380 asterisk, because it'll cost you $380 to purchase the sticker and pay the base fee. But you're going to be buying those, those bags as well at the store that you'd normally buy. And I looked it up, a large bag, heavy-duty, every single week would cost you almost about $50 extra. So just take that into consideration when you're figuring out which, which option you want to go with. So it's your choice. Save As You Throw at 240 a year, plus buying city-approved bags, or $380, plus buying your regular bags a year for Max Trash, conducting business as usual, putting the bags out in your, in your regular trash bags. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
So I'm going to put this up here for a minute. This is Dr. Robles' contact information, her phone number and her email, but of course, that is also available on the city's website. So I'll leave that up for just a minute, and then stop share, and then we can get to some of these questions that we have. There've been a number that have come into the Q and A, so hopefully that's enough time for everybody to grab a photo of that if they need it. But again, that information is always available on the city website. I think a number of these, we have already, already been able to answer. So Annie Shaw asks, I live in GHI, how will this Save, Save As You Throw affect GHI residents? It will, it is, it is a program that includes anyone who gets city trash services. So that would include GHI. Next question was, are the trash bags unscented? And what do we do with trash bags that have not been used yet? I don't know who wants to, to field that one.
Yes. So the bags are not scented. And you have four months between now and January 1st to use your bags in any way that you want to use them. And if by the end of that type year, you still have some bags, you can offer them on Buy Nothing Green Belt, or donate them to the thrift store, or, you know, offer them to your friends in College Park or other parts that don't have the Say It program.
Next one, from Grace DiStaccio. If this program is designed to save money for residents, then how will it generate sufficient revenue to cover the city's costs? I think I can take an, an initial stab at that, but I think that part of the answer was one of those later slides. If you notice, the people who are, who are throwing away less trash are paying about the same as they are now. But if you throw away more trash, you pay more. So it sort of balances and makes it a little bit more fair. So some people will end up paying more, those who are, who are generating more trash or choose the Max Trash option, whereas other people will be able to keep their costs all the same. So it, so we would have had to raise costs. We would have had to raise the fees anyway. Everybody would have had to pay more if we had gone with just a standard flat rate increase that was just necessary to, to help reduce the deficit and the subsidy from the general fund. This way, many people will be able to pay about the same, so you're still saving money over what the increases would have been. But some people will truthfully have to pay more if you're throwing more trash. It just makes it a little bit more even and equitable.
Yeah. And in addition to that, And in addition to that. City manager Hostway indicated, um, the costs that are, that are going up to, to pay to have the trash, uh, disposed of at the landfill. Well. Uh, it's been shown that communities that have implemented this unit based trash collec- trash collection, um, system. Have reduced their trash collection by, their, their trash generation by forty-four percent. So we hope to do the same thing here. So that we aren't having to pay as much at the landfill. To the county to, you know, to landfill the, the, the trash.
So having a lower volume of trash going to the landfill saves us on tipping fees and also in trips to the landfill. Where I care to the equipment, where I care to our workers. So it, it also provides savings. In addition to what Kristen said.
And I would add that this program is being, it's going to be executed as a pilot project. So in the pilot period will allow us to test some of these assumptions that you heard of, right? That, that a, a save as you throw model is going to reduce the landfill waste. Um, it's going to also, it's going to reduce costs. So the overall net increase of the rates over time, we expect them to. To not be as steep. Uh, so this will bring additional revenue. We'll have twelve months of data to evaluate how well it's working. The other assumption that is built into this model is that it's not a, we don't expect a hundred percent participation in the save as you throw model. There, we expect folks that will have the max trash, uh, rate and that will bring in that additional, uh, revenue.
So next one from Annie Shaw, um, with GHI, we pay a monthly fee to the co-op that pays the city. How will that payment change? Um, I don't know if, uh, Dr. Robles, do you want to tackle that one?
Sure. So right now, uh, we're paying the two hundred and eighty-two GHI on our co-op fees. Um, now what we will be paying is two forty. In our co-op, if, if you participating, well, actually for, for whether you have the max crash or you buy the, the bags. Will now be paying two forty for our co-op fees. So our co-op should go down by forty dollars. And then you either pay for the sticker or pay for the bags. So your co-op fee should stay the same or actually come down.
And then the rest of the, 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 the trash fee is from other, from the other sources, either the bags or the max trash sticker. Right? Um, and I'm going to jump to one from Beth Lamont. Is this just landfill trash or does it include recycling? And the answer is this is just landfill trash. Recycling does not change. The process is exactly the same for, uh, for recycling. Um, I think we already answered that one. Um, and then Beth Lamont also asked about the costs. I think we covered that, um, the, about the, the, uh, base rate and the trash. Uh, and the different bag sizes. And again, we will make sure that this presentation and, and these, the recording is available if you want to review those numbers and make sure that information is out on the city landing website. When that's all finished. Um, I think that one we've already answered about the trash. We've got to compliment, this sounds great. We are very supportive of this program. Uh, thank you from Kendall Morris. So that's good. Okay. So here's another good one. Um, is there a weight limit on the bags?
Yes, there is. Uh, currently we have a weight limit which is determined by OSHA standards and that is fifty pounds per bag. But that's. Existing. That's been the rule.
And then the next part of this question was what happens to bulk trash pickup?
We are not going to change the bulk crash trash pickup except, uh, the people that are now in single family homes will have to call it in. Before they just put it out. Now we're asking them to call it in. But there was, will still be trash pickup. That might be another conversation to have with council to see what kinds of limits. Uh, you would want to put on that, uh, bulk pickup, but all, all the other services we will continue as we have been providing them up until now.
And then what quantities do the bags come in? And I don't know, that may be something that maybe Mr. Dancy can't answer unless, unless, unless John or Dan, unless you've talked about that with, uh, Kristen Brown or some, any of the, the other folks from Way Zero.
We were told that they would be purchased in five units of five. Is that correct?
Typically, they'd be packed by, uh, so that you're not outlaying more than ten dollars for purchase.
Uh, next one, and this actually also might be you as well, Mr. Dancy, what, um, from Peter Toybin, um, what, wondering how the other places you mentioned that have similar programs dealt with public trash bins that could be used for free disposal? In my hometown in the Netherlands, they had to remove all tr- public trash bins, uh, for example, the ones by the bus stops. And I think this is a question that has come up and I think is something that, that other communities that you've worked with may have experienced.
So these programs have been going for about thirty years in the U S and illegal dumping, uh, under various forms is always brought up. It's a great question because it seems that people might do that. I think, you know, you have their choices here. Um, you can get the max trash. Option. If you don't want to do the bag program, um, you're going to have a fee one way or another, but our experience has been, uh, very limited, uh, to no illegal dumping now. I won't say that, you know, sometimes people might have to lock a dumpster here and there when they did it in the past. Uh, but generally speaking, it comes up before programs launches and then afterwards, it's, it's never an issue that we're. Uh, that, that we have to deal with. So, um, it's, it's a natural fear, but it really doesn't happen. And there are, there are a bunch of studies on it that we can provide.
And how many, about how many communica- communities have you worked with, uh, to set up this type of program?
Well, we've, we work with five hundred, but we've set up over two hundred, uh, as a company.
Okay. So that's a, that's a, that's a fair number of data points. Thank you. Um, next from Chris Herman, do we need to buy the same number and type of bag every week throughout the year or can we adjust as we go?
You can adjust as you go.
Yeah.
So if you go to the co-op, there'll be, uh, bags of bags. So there'll be like four or five bags. Per purchase and you can buy a baggie of small bags, a baggie of medium bags, a baggie of big bags and then use them as you want. You don't have, and you can purchase them however often you want.
Right. So it's all up to, it's all up to the household.
Uh, we have another comment, just a comment from Mark, Mark, uh, Dawkin. Uh, we had the system in our town in Minnesota. Before we moved here, it worked very well. We really affirmed this program. Thanks. Good to have some, some, uh, real experience with, uh, location. Um, Claudia Jones asks if, uh, if we decide to do the max trash sticker, it'll cost me a total of, and actually I think it's, it's three eighty a year as just a slight correction to her question. If I pay to have my trash picked up at two eighty a year, I'm saving one forty a year. Not sure I'm entirely understanding your question, Claudia, but, but, but it is correct that the max trash sticker is the, is, is the base fee of two forty plus the sticker, which is another one forty for a total of three eighty. Whereas if you just pay the base fee and your bags and maybe you only use one small bag a week, that would get you up to two eighty. Um, hopefully that answers your question, Claudia. Um, we talked about bulk trash. Uh, another question.
Mayor Potem Weaver, do you mind if we read the questions just for the record and that way we?
Yeah, well, there was, yeah, I think the ones that I've skipped are all the ones that were, we already, like, we already answered, like, will it affect bulk trash?
Okay.
Cause we, that was, that was one that somebody else had already asked. That's the only reason I skipped it. Cause someone had the exact same question previously. Um, but yes, I can just make sure I read all of them. I just, we, we had already specifically addressed that one. Uh, here's another. Sorry, were you going to add something else, Mr. Summer?
No, I said, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, another one. Misuse of recycling is likely to increase, for example, putting non-recyclable stuff in, in recycling bins. I don't know. Uh, if anybody wants to address that one at all.
Mr. Dancy?
So, uh, again, the recycling does go up in terms of total tonnage, which is one of the goals of the program. The percentages of, of, uh, of misuse, as you say, uh, do not go up and there are large, uh, areas of the country that have. Great sample sizes to show that, that their entire merc for fifty percent of people are on unit based pricing and fifty percent are on, you know. Throw away as much as you want and they really don't have differences in the community's percentages based on whether or not they do this program. So I think one of the things that does go up is people's understanding of what can and can't go in the recycling bin because a lot of people are going to look at this. If they decide to do the, uh, unit based pricing or say, say, save as you throw, um, they're going to, um. Look at some of the things more closely for the first time, see what they can do to save.
So, uh, Liamo asks, where would we buy the city approved bags, um, or the max trash stickers?
So the master stickers you will buy, uh, online, uh, Way Zero is going to provide them. Uh, Mr. Dancy is the president of Way Zero, so you'll just go onto the, uh, company website and purchase the sticker. Um, the bags you can buy at the co-op, uh, Safeway, Giant, CBS, uh, the city, uh, council can decide which stores will carry. Um, so wherever, all, all the neighborhood, all the stores that are convenient for the neighborhoods where this is going to happen. They're all going to have the bags.
We'll, we'll, we'll still in the process of working all the details out such as that. So. Once we. You know, once all this has been determined, we'll have lists to let everybody know where the bags are available, how they get hold of the max. Trash sticker and all that, but, uh, we're still working out, uh, a number of the details.
And I just want to comment, I know there that we've had, we have a lot of questions in the queue. So I know some people may have put that, felt like they put theirs in a long time ago, but we've got a lot of questions in the crew queue that we're getting through. So how would GHI implement this? This is from Mark Duncan. Since GHI pays our fee, we don't pay individually. And I think Dr. Robles already addressed that, the, the base rate can still be assessed through the GHI fees as is done now. Uh, and I think this is a very similar question. Will GHI include, from Jessica F., will GHI include the two hundred and forty dollars in the co-op fee as usual and GHI residents will just pay, pay for their own bags? That's, that's the expectation. Um, Shelley T. asks, are say as you throw bags purchased individually or in packages? I think we answered that as well. It sounds like packages of five, but you can mix and match, uh, different sizes. Okay, here's a, here's a, a new one. Uh, Dory asks, what about garden debris which are collected on Fridays?
That will continue to be collected on Fridays as usual. So yard waste will continue.
Okay. Um, Jane asks, how will people be billed for this? So I think we've addressed this. Part of it will come through the co-op fees or for those, I guess we should say for those non-GHI. There are some households who are already billed directly by the city and it would continue in that same fashion for that base rate. And then just the, the, the bags or the max trash ticker sticker would be purchased in a different ma- manner, but the, the base rate would be billed in the same way. Whatever that is through your, um, direct from the city for the single family homes or as GHI does it already. Um, Velma is, uh, the, Velma says the GHI answer was, I'm not sure which. Answer, um, she was not feeling was meaningful to, and, and to address that. That might mean something that Velma, that might need something you need to clarify what, what wasn't clear. Here's a, another question that we've partially addressed from Jessica F. Where will the bags be available for purchase? We've talked about that and will they be the same price at all retailers?
Yes.
Yes. And the answer is yes. Um, Susan Walker asks, how will you figure which, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question. How will you figure which bags and city the number? I'm not sure I'm understanding your question, Susan.
Susan was also on the phone or, or she raised her hand.
Yeah, maybe Susan, I'm going to give you permission to ask your question because I'm not sure I'm understanding, uh, uh, what your question is right there.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what I wanted to know is you can, you, you're going to have so many bags. How are you going to be able to keep track of that so that we know how much we're going to, you know, so that we, the city knows how to pick, charge us and, uh, that sort of thing.
The city, the, it's. The city will not charge you for the bags. You go and determine which bags and how many bags you need and you go and purchase them.
Right, but if you have two bags, you know, you get the bags and you put two in and one weekend, one the other week, how does the city know that?
Oh, uh.
I think, John, I think Mr. Dancy is.
Yeah, I was gonna.
The transaction happens at the, at the retail store that you buy bags. So the retailer is fundamentally paying the city. For the cases that they purchase and then they're selling you the individual packages. So the, the city earns their revenue when the retailer purchases the case of bags. And then you go pay the retailer for those bags when you make your purchase. So you don't, we don't have to keep track of how many bags you use.
Okay, so, so I, it doesn't make any difference if I do it two bags, one week and one bag next week.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, next one is, um, from Jenny Durling. Might, uh, might this cause people to be more reckless about putting stuff in their recycling which doesn't belong? Um, I think, again, that's the experience. We, we hope not. I don't know. It looks like you want to say something to that, Dr. Robles.
I was just going to say, based on, on, uh, Zero Waste, Way Zero's, uh, experience, uh, there is no increase of contaminants in the recycling. And there is no increase of dumping on the streets.
Um, Patricia P. asks, I'm in an HOA where the trash collection is paid in the dues. So how are homeowners billed in this program?
Whichever way the HOA is billing them now, we'll just build in the two forty base fee.
Um, uh, so Elizabeth, um, Mondragon asks, um, where will we buy these and is tax included in the cost? And I think we've addressed at least the first part of that, the, the, the various stores where they, they will be available. As far as tax, I don't actually, I don't think they're.
So I would say we have to, we have to find out whether there's a sales tax on the purchase of the bags. I, I do not believe there will be, uh, that's a state by state sales tax termination, but because it's fundamentally a fee. Uh, for a city, it should not be taxed. Um, but I have not, I don't know, Kristen, uh, Brown's talked to anyone at the Department of Revenue. But, um, there are other towns that have done unit based pricing type programs in Maryland, so there may be something established and we can get that answer. But it, 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 it is not generally taxed, uh, by the states.
Uh, Marjorie Manuel asks, how do we deal with neighbors who like to put their trash in my trash container?
I think that would be a question for code enforcement. Um, so Mr. Salmarone, we might have to, uh, rope Terry Ruby in to see. What are our, our current procedures? For finding people or, you know, admonishing people that are putting trash in other people's trash cans. Right?
Right, right. That's, that's, uh, please send us an email and we can follow up on that, on that, uh, issue as a littering problem or. I'll, I'll speak with code enforcement about other regula- regulations that may apply. Thank you.
Uh, Kate from Shelley T., can we try the program and decide to buy the sticker later?
Maybe if we're going to be purchasing the stickers quarterly. Then yes, you'll, you'll, you can, uh, buy bags for one quarter and then the next quarter you decide the program's not working for you, then you might be able to purchase your quarterly sticker. Uh, but that's part of the details that we haven't, uh, worked out yet.
Yeah, we haven't worked that out yet.
Yeah.
But it sounds like that is something that's very, that's desirable because that also could be helpful for if somebody, you know, if you're moving partway through the year or something like that, um.
Right, and the reason we, we haven't worked it out, we, we've been, we've discussed it and, you know, all of us have, have discussed it and, and thought about it in a different way. There are folks that are snowbirds. They might leave, uh, in the winter or winter birds, whatever the opposite of snowbird is. And so they may want to suspend the service and the sticker might not be a good mechanism to do that where the bags are. Because you buy the bags as you're going to use them. So there are pros and cons for each approach. And there is a cost associated with the quarterly, quarterly sticker, right? If, um, that would be a lot of quarter, quarterly stickers that folks will have to, that we would have to print and make available. Um, but we're just trying to figure out what will be the best approach for the consumer.
Right.
Hey, it, it's a pilot. So some of these details will work through and, uh, you know, we'll find some better ways to do some things and other things may not work out, but, uh, that's the purpose of doing a pilot.
I, I would recommend people that are unsure whether they want to participate or not between now and December thirty-first. Uh, pay attention to your trash. Pay attention to how you're recycling. Are you recycling everything that you can? Are you recycling everything that you can recycle? And what's the volume of trash that you're producing? So you have four months to figure out how much trash you're producing now. And then you'll have data to know whether you want the mass trash sticker or whether you want to purchase your bags. And also I should say that for Labor Day Festival, I'm gonna have my table of recycling items for anyone to come by and we can have conversations as to what can go in your recycling bin, what can go into the compost, yard waste, and I'll have the example bags so that you can come and, you know, gauge them and, and have an idea and compare with your own trash. So that you can say, oh yeah, I probably put one small bag per week. So, you know, that would work. Or you're gonna say, oh no, the big one's too small for me. I'm gonna need five of those. So then you can decide whether the program makes sense for you or not.
But also the, um, recycling form of what can be recycled is on the city website, right? So you can, um, you can see that yourself. It's not, doesn't have absolutely everything. So Luisa's the expert on what to ask. Um, if, if, if there's something beyond that.
So yeah, come to the Labor Day Festival, uh, come check out the table, ask me all your questions. Also feel free to email me or call me. Um, I'd, I'd also be willing to like do, uh, trash audits, uh, with you to figure out for your case in particular, what will work for you. Um, so we're, we're flexible and we're here to help.
And, and the Green Team and Green Aces will also be helping Luisa at the Labor Day Festival at the Public Works booth. So if you've got any questions about this program, uh, stop by and, and feel free to ask us. But we'll also have other means, like we will, we'll be doing other Zooms and things like that with more information, um, and, and more questions.
And so the question is from David Morse. Our questions only to be presented in this written form or will be allowed to speak. It was my intention to get through the written ones and then get to raised hands, but there keep being more and more written ones. Now I did change it. It defaulted to, to, to attendees couldn't see the other questions that had been asked. I've changed that. So people now can see if they're, the question they wanted to ask is already asked. I should have thought about that before. So we're, we'll try to get to, yeah, I think the, the, yes, the intention was to get through the written ones and then have people raise hands, but there just are a lot of written questions. Um, David Waples asks about how we will deal with bulk trash, which we've addressed. Um, we've got another question about where do we purchase the save-as-you-throw bags, which we've addressed. See, I, yes, I wish I had, I had changed the settings, uh, to see that people were, since we're getting some of the repeat questions. Um, Richard asks grease-stained pizza boxes. Normally I do not put them in a trash bag just next to my trash bag in the trash bin. What should I do now?
You can take them to the lake. I mean, to the drop off, to the food scrap drop-off place at the lake. Uh, you can put them in there. They are compostable. Or if you participate in the, uh, compost group, curbside compost, you can tear it up and put it in your bin.
And I have to say that I know not everybody is willing to do this, but I try to tear out the grease spots and put those in the compost and put the rest of the pizza box in the recycle. Um, so that's another option as well.
Yes.
Um, Lori Hertz asks, where and how will we buy this ba- these bags? Again, various stores, we've addressed that. Um, uh, what about special trash, small furniture, pulled-up carpet, et cetera? Um, and how you will, how will you differentiate between stuff that can fit in a large bag versus special? I think by special meaning, I guess that's the bulk trash.
Uh, what, can you repeat the question?
What about special trash, small furniture, pulled-up carpet, et cetera? And how will you differentiate between stuff that can fit in a large bag versus special?
So special trash is the same as bulk trash. And we're treating bulk trash the same way that we've been treating it now. So that's not gonna change. So, um, a rolled-up carpet would be special trash or bulk trash. Um, a chair, it depends. Is, is your chair, uh, can someone else use the chair even, even though it might be scratched or scuffed? Can you take it to the thrift store? Um, so then that, that's where people are gonna have to start thinking, you know? Can they offer it in by nothing green belt? Uh, will someone from FreeCycle take it? So, um, and then if, if not, then we'll pick it up as bulk trash.
Um, Claudia Jones asks, if this excludes apartments, how much does it cost the city to pick up a trap, trash a year for apartment complexes? Does the apart- do the apartments generate more trash than single-family homes or GHI? If so, then why are the apartment complexes excluded from this program? I believe the short answer is that the city's trash collection doesn't serve the apartments. They have their own, they pay for their own trash collection service.
That's correct.
Hey, if I could elaborate on that, there, there's a real equity issue here. Uh, the majority of the city, the apartment developments in the West, most of the homeowners associations and condo associations in the East have paid for their own trash service. And the service that's provided by the city is actually being subsidized by the other parts of the city. So while this program on the one hand provides an opportunity for people to, to actually save on how much they're paying based on what they're throwing away, it's also reducing the subsidy so that, uh, there's not a burden on everyone else in the city who does not have, uh, currently have Green Belt Trash Collection. It's a real equity issue.
Um, so I think these are, the next two are sort of related questions. Um, how durable are these bags? What is the thickness of the bags? Uh, this person is concerned about heavy trash such as kitty litters tearing the city-approved bags.
Uh, no, the city-approved bags are pretty hearty and they will be able to take the kitty litter. Also, uh, you can collect your kitty litter in whatever type of bag you're collecting it now and then just put it inside the city-approved bag with your other trash. So if you have cats, um, I've, I've been, uh, gauging how much, uh, the track, the kitty litter fills up. This is one small bag. The kitty litter will fill up to like about here once a week and then the rest would be for just your trash. So people with kitties can buy the one small bag per week and still be able to set it out every week plus their trash and not need anymore. And they're pretty, pretty hearty bags and they can come look at them at the Labor Day Festival. Or, or they can swing by my office and check them out.
And Dory asks about bulk trash items. I think we've addressed that there's basically no change except that the, the single-family homes will have to call for bulk trash pickup, which GHI already has to do.
Yes.
Um, another question for GHI members, will the annual fee be paid to GHI or directly to the city of Greenbelt? We have answered that. Uh, comment, um, excellent program. All the presenters did their homework, crossing fingers that it works. Uh, Julie Callis asks, how will the city prevent residents from dumping personal trash in public areas to avoid costs? I think we've addressed this one as well, that in general, that doesn't seem to be an issue in other communities. Um,
But I just want to add that we are going to try to, we're gonna try to make sure that that doesn't happen, you know, try to keep an eye on things like that.
Yeah. Um, what stores will be selling the new trash bags? I think that's still somewhat to be determined, but we, but that will be arranged. We know certainly try to make it convenient for everybody to be able to buy the trash bags. Uh, question from Les, can one join after January 1st, 2026, so we can use up the bags we already have and then when done, join up?
No.
Well, and I would say you could buy the max trash sticker if, that, so that would be an option is, um, I mean, I think the system will change over with that base free fee of 240 on January 1st. But if you want to use up your existing bags, you can always buy the max trash sticker and then use those bags, uh, and use, until you use them up. So that is, that is an option.
But unless you use a lot of trash, that'll be more expensive. And if you don't use much trash, that would be a more, much more expensive, well, more expensive as option.
Yeah. Um, another question from Claudia Jones, same question about the cost a year for businesses and churches. Do they generate more trash than residential homes and GHI? And I think I've seen those spreadsheets, Mr. Salmarone, or, and I, uh, that, that about the number of, certainly the number of accounts for businesses and churches is very small compared to the number of, of residences.
Correct. The, and the rate for the church is right now, it's currently, uh, 335, uh, for the year. Uh, we're going to discuss that internally, uh, adjusting those rates. All the rates haven't, none of the rates have been adjusted over the nine years. So we really need to adjust the rates regardless, just nine years is a long time. Um, to, to go without a rate when all other costs go up. So we're, we're also making that change. But as you can see from what I presented earlier, that the, the residential rate is much lower than the church rate. And I think the, the general sentiment is that even though the trash collections once a week and church maybe only be meeting once a week, they, there's more trash there than your typical household.
So, and okay, just a clarification of, uh, Limo is Tom Lamont. Thank you, Tom. Um, does say-as-you-throw impactful item pickup, um, known, but I mean, not, not effectively some minor changes, but not anything. Um, how, again, another question about preventing folks from putting trash or garbage in the public trash containers. That's clearly a big concern. That's something that we will pay attention to. And again, if there's, that could end up being a code enforcement issue and, and, and we can also make adjustments as, as needed. Um,
I'm, I'm wondering if there's a recommendation from Way Zero regarding those questions. People seem, uh, concerned about contamination in the recycling and dumping in common areas. Um, what would you tell people that have those concerns?
Well, again, I mean, it's, if there are individual businesses that might have dumpsters that people are, might abuse, that's a possibility. Um, I would say, you know, that's, again, it's very limited. We've had some people who said they've gotten locks for their dumpsters and things like that, that are businesses to prevent that. But in general, the cities and towns that do this, there are a wide range of them. You know, they still have their public space bins and things like that. So they have code enforcement rules that we can provide for you. And you can see what works for you. But again, this is, it's not something that's ever a substantial discussion after the program's launch.
Uh, question for Laura Rosenthal, are the bags biodegradable? What is the difference between them and cheaper plastic bags I can buy in bulk?
Let's let Mark answer that. Okay?
So the, the bags are not biodegradable. Uh, it's not that they couldn't be. Uh, but they're really not gonna degrade where they go. So, um, those are typically used for compost applications. Um, and they're much, much, much more expensive to use a biodegradable bag. Um, the, the bags are thicker than, uh, what you would typically find in the grocery store by a little bit. And that's kind of standard in the industry for all the reasons that we've talked about. We talked about kitty litter, making sure that they are durable enough because people are going to try to stuff the bags full because they want to get their money's worth out of the bags. So that is, that is one of the things that people do. Um, so the programs over the years have evolved to have certain standard of, of gauge of a bag that, that works. So that's, uh, the key thing. But I, I think, again, unless you're going to go to a place where the bags are actually going to biodegrade, if that's not their end-of-life spot, uh, it's just an added cost that it really doesn't provide.
And I think, Dr. Robles, you had a good answer for a resident who asked this via email about the, the, the bags is, um, I, in terms of the, but what if I don't use plastic bags now? Now I'm using plastic bags. Um, and I thought you had a really good answer to that.
So, so some, some of us, uh, don't buy plastic bags and we use other bags that we have around to put our trash out because we produce so little. So in, in my case, I'm gonna have to go purchase the bags. So I feel that is, is more bad that I have to do in order to help a lot of people do a better good. Because as we've seen the numbers, the trash going to the landfill will be reduced by about 40%. That's huge. 40% reduction in trash going to the landfill. That's a, a much larger good, uh, than me having to buy a few extra, you know, plastic trash bags. So a few of us will have to do a little bit of that so that many of us can do a lot of good.
And also the, um, plastic, um, there will, when this program is used, there is far less plastic in the landfill too. Not just, not just any garbage, but also plastic. There's far less plastic. Even though there are some of us who will be using more plastic, including our household. But on the whole, there will be far less plastic used.
And Mr. Dancy makes a good point that having biodegradable bags going to the landfill doesn't really make any sense because the landfill is so compacted that they're not able to properly biodegrade. And if they do biodegrade, they'll be producing methane. That's much worse for the environment than just having a plastic bag.
And as Mayor Jordan explained, this is a pilot program. So that's not to say that down the road, but it'll maybe a way down the road that we'll look at more uh, sustainable bags to use instead of plastic bags. But for right now, we're talking about plastic bags.
So Elisa Delagianis, um, asks about in GHI, where will we send our check? Again, the base fee, we, we are, we've already talked about that. If you want to buy the, and then you would just buy the bags from the store. If you want to buy the max trash sticker, there will be an option to buy that online. Um, that's the plan. Another question, will these cities, these slides be posted to the city website along with the recording and other info? Absolutely. Um, Claudia Jones asks, what if I decide not to participate in these choices? Do I have this option? If you're in one of the city serves, I mean, assuming this passes, it has not, it has not had, it doesn't have final approval from council yet. That's the resolution that will, that we'll be looking at. Um, but it, this, if it passes, then that will be the way the rate structure is set up. So you will have to choose either the base rate plus bags or the base rate plus the max trash sticker. Those will be the choices. Uh, if you're in someplace that gets city, uh, city-provided trash, it is a change to the way the city's ta- trash, uh, solid waste trash rates are, are assessed.
Um, Kristin, could I just interrupt?
Yeah.
To go back a couple of questions about the GHI. I'm not so sure all GHI residents understand how it works. That, I, I, I know since we moved back into GHI, I don't look at the co-op fee. Uh, when I get it, you know, i- i- in December or January. But it does have there that we are paying monthly 1/12 of the, um, the waste collec- waste and recycling collection fee. It's in our GHI co-op fee. So it will be, uh, you know, well, assuming it's gonna be modified by GHI to, to go with the new base rate fee. But it's in our co-op fee. It's not something that's gonna be in addition. It's something.
You're already paying it. You just may not notice.
Doing it. Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Well, and I'm in an HOA that doesn't have, uh, city recycling, but it's part of my, like, I don't, I'm not sure it's even itemized as part of my, as part of my HOA fee on a monthly basis. I just pay that, that fee and I know that my trash is part of it and I can look up the contract we have and know much, know how much the HOA as a whole is paying for my trash. But I don't think mine is even itemized the way it sounds like yours is. So I, I couldn't actually tell you how much I pay per month. I could probably figure it out if I did some math. Uh, but, but yeah, it just, I pay my monthly HOA fee and it, my trash gets picked up. Um, so, and then Steve Skolik is commenting also, also remember that the less weight we carry to the landfill, the less diesel fuel we put in our trash truck. So that's another way to save the city money. Um, where would we post the match, max trash sticker or logo?
You would put it on your trash can. So like on the lid of your trash can. Right now, the, uh, city ordinance says everyone has to have their trash inside a trash can with a lid. So that's not gonna change. So what you're gonna do is you're gonna put your sticker on your lid. And the trash guys will be able to see, oh, there's a sticker. Whatever bags in there we take. There's no sticker. There's gonna be city-approved bags.
Uh, Claude Aubert asks, how would this affect special trash such as broken furniture, old mattresses, et cetera? We've addressed the bulk trash. Um, Shelley T. asks, what type of bags are the save-as-you-throw? We've talked about that a little bit. They are, they are plastic bags. Do they break down quicker than, say, standard GLAD trash bags? Um, and I think the answer is no. Um, do they stretch to allow them to not break or tear easily? Although I think you have some that are similar.
Yeah, they're, they're right here. And, uh, yes, they do. They're like your standard plastic that you can stretch it a little bit. I just stretched it. You can't quite see, but I stretched it, left a mark and it didn't break. I've been hauling these bags around and they're doing pretty well. For, you know, just tossing them around my car or demo places.
Um, where, and we, where can the bags be purchased? We, we've talked about that. I think final list to be determined, but that will be communicated. What percentage of the cost of the bags go to the city? It is a good portion of it. I don't know exactly the percentage, but, but, uh,
Like 70% more or less?
Because some of it is the cost of the production of the bags and the distribution of the bags.
Yes. Yes.
Uh from Steve Skolik, if I do not have a max trash sticker, but I put my own bag in the trash, what happens?
It's not gonna be collected. You're gonna get, well, maybe the first week it might get collected and you get a um door hanger that explains that this is not the thing to do. The next time, uh next week they come, if you don't have a sticker and you have a regular bag, it won't be collected. Until you get a sticker or you get your bag.
And then, and then you get cited after that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Eventually you'll get cited.
Right.
Yeah.
Um James asks, sorry, wasn't able to make it earlier. Is the PowerPoint available elsewhere or going to be available? Yes, we will make it available. Um Claudia Jones asks, if my co-op fee is going to remain the same, what is the incentive to participate in this program?
The 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 question is GHI pays the city that has been paying the city two hundred and eighty dollars per household per year. It's gonna go down to two forty. Now, whether or not the co-op fee goes down or stays the same will probably depend upon a number of factors such as how, what's the county property tax going to be? You know, it could actually go up, but not because of the the part that's the the um trash collection fee. So theoretically, if everything else stays the same, the co-op fee would go down. Now, we know thing, things rarely go down because so many prices and costs and that are are rising. But uh the point is, by going with this, it it's going to either go down, stay the same, or at least not go up as much as it would if it had been the two eighty or even higher um base fee um for trash collection.
And I think that's part of the answer too. If we hadn't gone with this program, fees would have gone up in some fashion to some level. Um so so this is a way to do that while still incentivizing people to produce less trash. And those who produce more trash or just want to keep the current system will have to pay more. But everybody's, the city, we were going to have to raise trash fees regardless. So this is just a way of doing it in a more fair way than the, but we were gonna have to do that anyway, unfortunately. Just our costs have gone up too much and we haven't raised them in a long time, as has been noted. Uh Beth Lamont asks, would it be possible to increase the pickup capacity of the compost drop off site at Public Works? It is sometimes full and overflowing. There will be more motivation to drop off compostables. Think that's certainly something we can consider. Um I I think we can't answer that now, but
We can certainly, that that's a separate contract and we could contract to have the bins be picked up three times a week instead of twice a week or whatever it is the schedule is.
Patricia P. asks, is the purchase of the bags or stickers mandatory? And if you have city trash pickup, you will have to choose one or the other. Um uh David Waples asks, how will we control deal with illegal jumping? Will this cause more litter? Again, the experience of other communities is that it has not. Um, yeah, and Janice Wolf was clarifying by special trash. She means that which we call in for, which is occasional for most residents. So yeah, I think that's the 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 term Public Works uses is bulk trash, so that will not change. Uh Stefan Broad asks, will yard waste collection continue as it is now? I think we answered this one already. Yes. Okay, Kiki, I'm concerned that some rude people will throw their excess tra- bags of trash into city trash cans. In GHI, we lost at least three public trash cans because people were dumping their trash in public cans even after Public Works asked them to stop. What is the city planning to to discourage public dumping? We talked about this a little bit already, and I think the fact that it happens some now is also an indication that even without this system, some people are just not, don't behave the way they should, but we'll have to look at some.
We we might have to um talk with enforcement again. If there's a way to identify people by the trash that they're putting out, which often you can, then we might find a way to find those people.
Karen G. asked, should residents expect the price per bag to remain stable for a period of time? Or will the bag price increase annually or periodically? Can residents purchase large quantities of bags?
Yes, so I think people can purchase as many bags as they like. Um uh but unfortunately, the price of the bags will have to go up um to keep up with inflation. Uh and that's part of a a contract that will be um negotiating with Way Zero. Uh but yes, just like everything else, the price goes up, the price of the bags will go up. Um, yes, Mark.
Yeah, I was just, sorry. Uh I was just gonna mention that most cities uh try to keep the prices of the bags to residents fairly stable. Um and then they increase them, not nine years, as you've gone nine years, but usually three or four years between increases. And it is interesting that there is uh sometimes a run on bags um to the stores where people do try to stock up. So uh you know, that is a, an interesting phenomenon. But it it it, I wouldn't recommend necessarily changing the prices with the retailers and all that every year. But uh obviously, prices tend to go up over time. So it's just a matter of what period you want to look at those increases.
And I would add that as the tipping fees go up, we already have a schedule for the next two years that the tipping fees will go up. So we'll have to keep track with, uh keep up with that increased cost in the tipping fees. And I anticipate that those fees are gonna continue to to go up um at the at the landfill. And we'll have to keep up with those costs. Additionally, I'll remind, remind all that the the first twelve months of the project is gonna be a pilot project. And if this would allow us to get the right, the assumptions that we're making in the model more accurately. So the program does not anticipate that a hundred percent of people will buy bags and use the 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 purchased bags as solely as their, as their way of uh of throwing the trash. Some folks are gonna get the max sticker. And we're we're gonna test the model with the data that we collected in the, oh, the twelve month period. We'll have a better idea of how the revenue changes and we'll lock in or have better idea of how to set a price for a longer period of time so that we're not uh changing the price every year.
Uh Joe Robbins asks, from where the bags will be purchased? We've addressed that one. Uh and I think we basically answered this one. Is trash in, from Malcolm Needner? Is trash in non-approved bags not picked up? People might make mistakes. I think I think there will be, there will be some sort of grace period, I think, or warnings given initially.
And we're gonna be educating the people over the next uh
Five months.
Yeah, September, October, November, December. Yeah, almost four and a half months.
Uh how many gallons is a typical kitchen-sized trash bag? I think they're off it. But I, actually, that's a good question.
They're like uh seven to eight gallons usually, like, well, our GHI trash cans. I don't know what single-family homes trash cans are like.
I think some are. I think thirteen gallon is a pretty common size as well. So that's more like the medium size, I think.
Right, medium is 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 a thirteen gallon. Sometimes people say fifteen gallon, but if it's a typical thirteen gallon tall kitchen and trash bag, it's the same size dimensionally as a a traditional FD GLAD or private label bag.
Right, that's what they sell as their their kitchen trash bag. Although we have a s- uh shorter trash can in our kitchen, and that's more like the it's it's, we don't even need an eight gallon to fill that can, but it's the taller ones that are thirteen gallon, you know, that you find in a lot of kitchens.
Um and Joe Robbins asked, you mentioned fifty pounds per bag. Who is weighing these bags? Dr. Robles, I don't know that it's necessarily that precise, like a luggage scale at the airport.
The trash guys have a feel for it, and when they go to grab the bag, they have a gauge as to, oh, this is more than the fifty pounds that they're allowed to carry because of injuries. So then they will just leave that bag if it's heavier than what regularly picked up.
Yeah, if you want to get rid of your gold bars and throw them in the trash, let me know and I'll I'll help you.
So uh two similar questions. Will we have to pay a sales tax on the bags? Will the bag costs include tasks? And Mr. Dancy addressed that one, that generally not, but we need to figure out what the rules are here. Um Laura Rosenthal, can we leave the bags outside our home without putting them in a trash bag? What is the rule now?
The rule now is all bags have to be in a trash can. So that will, that will stay the same. You have to have your bags in a trash can.
Um the the the, another question from anonymous, you mentioned the bags being available at the co-op. Where else can we purchase them? How will the city prevent supply shortages in any given week? Think we've addressed the first parts of them, but the supply chain and the supply shortages may be something that Mr. Dancy can address.
I'm sorry, I was reading ahead in the question. What was the?
Oh, it was a question of of are there, are there ever any issues? The question is about supply shortages in any given week. Is there any issue? Have you had any issues with like running out of bags uh in in any of the communities you've worked?
So we went through the, we went through the pandemic and that was a challenge. Um but no, the key is to have bags on the shelf so that it's convenient for the residents and that they don't have to go to a second store. So it should always, that should always be uh supplied. Uh and that's, that's just standard as as part of the program. So the answer, no, I mean during the pan- pandemic, there were some challenges for sure, but other than that, no, not in my career.
Thank you. Um and then Elisa Mani asks, just out of curiosity, who is paying for recycling? Well, that's coming out of this as well. Yes, it's just not charged separately.
Exactly. Yeah, so this fee does cover uh the portion of recycling. However, the tipping fee at recycling is much lower than at the landfill. And the warranty on the vehicles is lower also for recycling than for trash. So.
Lisa, uh what is the tipping fee?
At the land, at the MRF, it's twenty five, twenty seven dollars per ton. At the landfill, it's now eighty five dollars per ton.
Right, so when the city takes trash to the landfill, they weigh it and they charge us for it.
Yes.
So I'm just pointing that out for anyone that doesn't know what a tipping fee is.
Well, yeah, and it is kind of, it's very evocative, right? The idea of tipping the uh tipping the trash truck into the uh into the, to the landfill or the bin. I guess that's why they
Yeah, that's what it is. The tipping fee is the the way of the materials that you're bringing. Because yeah, it's truck tips.
Yeah. Um so several questions. Um number one, how does this price compare to the uniform household price offered by other competitors? I believe Mr. Sammarone had a slide comparing to other, to the county and other uh other locations. We will make those slides available if you want to look at that. But I think the short answer is, we charge a lot less and give better service um than than surrounding, surround, than the county or other counties. Uh number two, one of the main attractions of living in GHI is being able to reliably predict our household expenses. Collective bargaining also gives us more leverage to negotiate competitive prices. Couldn't variable pricing end up being detrimental to people with children and those on a fixed income? Well, I think the advantage is if you're, if you're, if you're on a fixed income and you pay attention to reducing your trash, then you will pay less. I mean, the truth is, yes, families with children will probably generate more trash than a a single individual or a couple. But I think the truth is that that is you you are generating more trash and should, and and in the, in a utility model, just like if you use more electricity or you use more water, you have to pay more for those services. And that's just not the way trash is often done, but that is the way many other utilities are done. Um I think the other aspect of that is, um I think Dr. Robles mentioned this. If you pay attention for the next few months and sort of pay attention to how many bags you generate per week, then you'll have a sense yourself of uh how how much you may be paying because it's not gonna be the same for household, per household, but it may be, you may be able to predict your own waste, even though yours may not be the same as your neighbor's.
Yeah, and I'd also like to add that we had at a city council meeting someone who said, oh, she has a uh several kids and it was gonna be real hard to do. But then when she looked at her trash can and found out that the kids were putting in, what was it, soda cans or soda bottles?
Yogurt cups.
Oh, yogurt cups. And you know, those things are recyclable. So it's gonna be up to the parents as well to make sure, or maybe, maybe just the opposite, the kids to make sure that the parents do it right. That things that can be recyclable don't go into the trash, they go into the recycling bin.
And the third question from this person, won't people holding garbage in their homes for more than a week risk of attracting pests?
Not if you're composting. If you're composting, uh then your compost either gets picked up every week. You can get rid of it in your backyard compost bin, or you can take it to the drop off station at the lake. So if you're composting, your trash never stinks. I keep my trash in in my uh trash um drawer in the kitchen for three, four weeks because I produce so little, and it never stinks because I compost.
And sometimes when we have certain things that don't go into our backyard compost bins um and that are gonna go to the compost um facility at the, at Buddy Attic Park, um we will put a few things into our freezer um until it's time to take them to Buddy Attic Park to get rid of them.
But but you could do the same thing with, um we've done that at our camp sometimes when we're camping. Um well, we have electricity there, but we sometimes put our trash in the freezer to keep mice away. So you could put, you could put smelling things in your freezer if you have room until you um, until you're putting the rest of your garbage out.
And Les, I think we did get to your question. I know it's taken a long time. That's because so many people had so many questions. I see your hand still up. Is that, did you have something else? I I think we we did get to your question. It just took a little while. I don't know if there's something further, um if you had something further you wanted to ask. Give you a minute to unmute if you'd like to, and then we'll go on. Okay, then we may, I hope we've addressed uh Les's question. Um another question, how will the city address concerns if, say, as you throw participants put their trash in the collection pile of max trash participants? Um I think that's going to have to be, you know, that that might be code enforcement, but I think also that is something, you know, sometimes you just, if it's your neighbor, maybe go talk to your neighbor.
There there, there will be a rule in place. So the max trash folks would have, can add up to three large bags of fifty pounds. So the jumbo bags. Um and the idea there is, that's the existing rule now that they can do, that uh households can put out three large bags not to exceed fifty pound. And again, the fifty pounds is for the safety, it's an OSHA regulation, it's for the safety of our employees.
Um, okay, so um so another question, why are the special bags necessary if I already have thirteen gallon bags? And the answer is if you want to use those thirteen gallon bags, you can get the mash tra- max trash uh sticker. But the special bags are necessary because part of your trash fee is paid by the purchase of those bags. So you buy the bags and the store sends the money, uh part of the money for the bag uh to the city, and that is part of your trash fee. That's how we make it a utility-based or u- a utility model, unit-based model is that based on the number of bags you buy, that's how the city gets the money based on the different sizes of bags. Okay, um Velma Khan, I think we've got it well enough now regarding GHI. Hopefully so. Hopefully, we're answering all the questions. We we're getting down there. Um uh Alicia uh Deligianis, when do we need to let GHI know if we want to be included in the program? I think because the fee, the base rate is the same for everybody, you just, you'll, you'll have to decide if you want to buy the max trash sticker. But if not, you just start the bag, buying the bags once they're available and start putting them out January first. So if you want to participate, just need to watch for the bags and go buy the bags. Um Diana Rutherford asks, does experience provide any information about an increase of undesirable plant waste such going, such as E- English Ivy that currently we are asked to throw in the garbage so it doesn't get into the city mulch pile? This is actually a question that I, that I was asked when I was talking to somebody else about this, and I'm not sure we've, I'm not sure we've necessarily fully addressed this.
Uh, Mark, Dancy, oh, no, I'm not.
Yes.
Can you unmute me?
No, I'm sorry.
No, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. So Mark, um have you found more yard waste contamination with the start of this program in other jurisdictions?
So I I have not. Um so I'm not sure, this is actually somewhat new for me, so I have not seen that particular question. So um but my, no, I haven't seen it. Um but I don't really know specifically what uh English Ivy is. Maybe I should, but I don't know. Local, local issue.
I I will say, um if you do have a lot of English Ivy, what you can do is um let it dry like on the, on the pavement or your parking spot or something like that. And once it's dry and crunchy, And once it's dry and crunchy, that can go into the yard waste.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, we have some weeds that are even worse than English ivy. It's this vine that it swirls around every single thing that it comes in contact with. And people were telling me, well, if you cut it and just leave it there, it's just going to keep growing. So I've been taking it, digging it out and putting it into a metal pan. And I'm waiting till it gets totally all dried out and then it can go, you know, anywhere frankly.
Exactly. Once, once the weed is dead, then you can put it with the yard waste.
But not poison ivy, right?
No, including poison.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I don't.
We're already at nine o'clock. We've still got 34 questions in the queue. So Les. So question from Nonew, are the bags compostable? We've answered that. No, but they wouldn't, even if they were compostable, they wouldn't compost in the, in the landfill anyway, unfortunately. Joe Robbins, when does the pilot start and end? It is for all residents or do we sign up to be in the pilot? So the pilot will start January 1st. But again, you, if you choose to participate, if you're part of this, then you just buy the bags or you buy the max trash sticker. So there's not really a sign up. It is a, it is a pilot in the sense that it is for a, a potentially limited period, but not a pilot in the sense that, that you're signing up for it. We, what if trash is not placed in a city bag or a sticker used? Will it be collected? We've addressed this. There'll be some warnings, but then it won't, at, at a certain point, it will not be collected. And that's same as Richard asks, very similar. If someone uses a non-programmed bag, will that bag be picked up? If they have a max trash sticker, then it will. If not, then they get a warning and eventually it will be not picked up. During the pilot, how will the city track feedback from residents? I, we, I think, you know, we track, the city regularly tracks the information and feedback and that we get from, from residents. I think we may have to keep it, create a separate category tracking specifically for this. But we do regulate whether it's through various means from emails or other things. Luisa, you have some thought?
Yeah. So if you, if you email me, then I'll keep a tab of all of the comments. Also, there will be a number that's hosted by Way Zero where people can call in and ask questions, have doubts cleared up. So that, that's going to be another option.
And, and we'll do surveys as well. We'll do surveys. And drawing from personal experience, we have a lot of our residents are connected and they share feedback to with us on a regular basis. So we, we look forward to continuing to have that feedback.
Lisa Maloney asks, will the people that pick up trash have some power in deciding if the bags are not the right type and not pick them up? Or if the recycling is contaminated, will there be repercussions if there is a recurrent offender in that sense?
Yes and yes. So we're going to empower our crews to know which bags are part of the program or not part of the program. And also so that they can start enforcing the recycling rules right now. If there's something that's not recyclable in your bin, they'll probably just leave it in your bin. We're going to start to actually leave a little note with whatever it is the issue is so that you understand what's going on.
And there is a policy, right?
There is a policy.
About what happens when that, when, when it's contaminated?
Yes.
Yeah.
So can one join? I think we've addressed this one a bit as well. Can one join after January 1st, 2026? So we can use up the bags we already have. And then when done, join up. I think it's, you will have to join in some sense. You can buy the max trash sticker and continue to use up your bags. If you, if you want to use up your bags in that way. Clara Morris has a few reservations. It appears that neither the city nor Way Zero has considered distributional questions. I fear that this restructured trash tax will be regressive, falling more heavily on some who have less ability to pay. I refer in particular to families with children. Even with assiduous recycling, these households can be expected to incur higher fees even with the most assiduous recycling. And this period is especially difficult for families. The safety net is fraying and the new tariffs will be yet another regressive tax falling most heavily on those with less ability to pay. Actually, I got a suggestion from someone I was talking to about this to maybe have a way to provide some free bags for kids, especially for like diapers and things. So maybe that's something we could, we could find a sponsor and give away bags with the free diaper giveaways or something like that. So that those who are generating more trash because they have young kids with diapers, we could give some free bags away as part of one of those donations. That's one idea. There might be some others. Two, one is how one assesses fairness depends on the context. We all pay for public schools regardless of whether we have children in the school. Education is a much greater cost than trash collection. I think it's an interesting point, but I do think that if you're generating more trash, there are ways you can reduce your own trash level. And I think that's part of the, the point is paying attention to recycling and other things. The proposal doesn't seem to include an attempt by the city to assess how this program actually affects people as it progresses. Think we actually just addressed that, that we will be doing assessment of how it's working. And if it's not working, we can change things at the end of the pilot period certainly, but potentially in between if there are things that are fixable. In between.
And, and, and I would add that we know what the alternative is, right? The alternative is keep doing what we're doing now and it would be a higher fee for everyone.
Yes, yes. And yeah, that, and that is, that is important to remember. It's not, we're not doing this spontaneously. We are doing this because we needed to reform our fee structure. That was going to happen anyway. That needed to happen as part of our budget process.
And, and as our mayor said, that in, in all these years, the people who are paying taxes, who, many of whom live in apartments and are lower income than, than the homeowners who are, who have the city trash. They are subsidizing our garbage. They can less afford it than we can. So that has been totally unfair. So this is, this is more fair for everybody almost, almost across the board. I, I can't see any other way to see it.
So Janice Wolf says, very organized presentation. We've thought of everything mostly. You know, hey, there's, it's good when there are questions that we haven't thought of. Another question about, we used to have green drop once a month. Is that going to be reinstated? That, I think that's before. I, I don't recall that, but that's.
Yeah. So during COVID, the green drop stopped coming. I've tried to reinstate it thus far. They've not been willing to provide the service again. But I will try with different companies. Right now, we're, we're still kind of coming out of, of, you know, people going back to work and stuff like that. So I think people will feel more comfortable. We've had American Rescue Workers in the past. We have green drop as well. So I will try with them. Last I tried, I don't know, like four months ago, they still were not willing to, to come, but I'll keep trying.
Now, the Green Belt Community Church does have a pickup. How often is that?
But twice a year now.
Twice a year. And in addition to that, there are a number of nonprofits that will come around. What's the one that we?
Lupus.
Lupus keeps sending us emails saying, we're coming around. Do you have any, any donations that you, you want us to pick up? So there are groups like Lupus that will come around and pick up certain items.
And plenty that you can take things too. But, but there are restrictions on those things too.
Do the bags have ties from Velma Khan? It looked like they did.
They do.
Yeah. And if you, and again, if you want to look at them, Luisa will have them at the Labor Day Festival.
Yes.
From David Waples, related to the invasive species, invasive species are not allowed in yard waste. It has always gone into the regular trash. I remove a lot of ivy and other invasive plants. Seems like this will unfairly cost me a lot of money to try to rid my part of the city from invasives. Is there a way to deal with this? We may have to see if we can strategize. I mean, some ideas were given, but that may be something we may have to do some more strategizing about. Sorry, I'm trying to get through these kind of quickly because this is, I, you know, I thought we'd be done by like nine o'clock. Will public works pick up small bags? In our experience, they leave anything smaller than 13 gallon bags in the trash bin. This is the only concern we have ever had. We appreciate their excellent service.
We never have anything, hardly ever have anything that big and they've always picked ours up. We always have a, a bag that's maybe, I don't know, five gallons. And we do that every, every week and we've never had a problem with that. So.
If, if there are loose items in the bin, they will not be picked up. So if you have like a bunch of dog poop bags in your bin, they're not going to grab one by one out of your bin. Everything has to be in a bag sealed so that they can lift and take out of the trash. So yes, they do pick up smaller bags, but it's in one bag that they can grab and lift. And the smallest, the smallest bag is this one in the program. So I'm sure they will pick this one up.
Laura Rosenthal asks, are the bags animal proof? I mean, probably not, but they should be in a bin anyway, right?
They should be.
I think no plastic bag or no paper bag is animal proof. So. Again, from David Morris, continuing my previous comment, expressing reservations about this proposal. We've had very little time to assimilate this new information and to explore the questions it raises. The first notice we received from GHI was nine days ago, yet the council seems set on pursuing an accelerated schedule towards implementation. Can't the city tap the brakes a little bit out of respect for the democratic process? I think, Mr. Morse, I would point out that we have been discussing it since, since March at the very least. We have a first introduction in August, but we're, the final vote won't be for another month or so. So you know, there's, there have been, it has been, there, there was actually an article in the news review about this, I think, after the work session in May. So I'm sorry if you hadn't heard about it until recently, but there has been actually public meetings through city council talking about it. And again, it won't actually start until January 1st. So there, there's even more time for that. But we, we have endeavored, we've, we have had a number of public meetings. We've talked to the GHI board. They came to that May work session. So I, I think hopefully that you, that we've addressed some of your concerns, but we really have attempted to be transparent. And it's, and we still have a lot more time to go before it gets implemented and there's more opportunity for comment. Piggybacking on Latrice's comment, are the plastic bags at least made from recycled plastic? Okay, there's a nod from Mr. Dancy. Yes, they are recycled plastic. If I do not have a max trash sticker, but I put my own bag in the trash, what happens? Again, a warning and then eventually it will not be collected. If it's in our GHI co-op fee, then it will be removed in January 2026. From Claudia Jones, I think your, your trash fee is already in your co-op fee. This would be a slightly different fee, but it still would be in your co-op fee. When is the council voting on this? So first reading on Monday, but there won't be any discussion. The second reading and the potential vote is September 8th, I think is the meeting. Claudia Jones, I have a trash can that fits in my trash room. Do I need to purchase a special trash can?
No. No.
No.
No.
What can you do if somebody vandalizes or removes your max trash sticker or it gets otherwise damaged?
Mark?
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, we mentioned this is a pilot program. I mean, to the extent that that happens often, I guess we'll have to figure that out. I think, you know, we would provide a number to have a replacement sticker. Every, every household will have a number on the sticker that is tied to that household. So we could reissue that same sticker. I think that would be the best way to do it. Hopefully that's not a common occurrence where it's been lost.
If I have two trash cans, do I need to pay for more than one sticker?
No. No, the, the trash people will see the sticker and then they know that, that you're a max trash household and they'll pick up. If you're currently putting out your two trash cans and they're currently being picked up, that will continue to be the same.
What happens if you post the max trash sticker on your trash bin, but later purchase a new bin? Do you have to purchase a new sticker for the full price? Or there'll be proof that you bought the sticker since there's a mention of homes being cited? I think we just addressed that, that there can be a record and, you know, a number like a parking permit sort of thing with a number. Has the city talked with the GHI Board of Directors about this program and what was their response? And yes, they, many of them came to the, came to the work session on May 5th when this was talked about. I think there have been some other conversations and we will continue to, to have as many conversations as needed. But so we, we haven't talked to the, we do, haven't gone to necessarily a board meeting, but they came to the work session and, and there have been other conversations. So short answer is yes. Following up on Karen G's question, this is from Chris Herman. Can we buy the bags in bulk at a lower rate than they would be in packages of five? No, because the, the part of the fee for your trash is part of the, is part of the price. So that there's not a discount for buying more. Jessica F, I just want to note a potential concern that people, that people refuse to purchase the bags. Will dump their regular trash bags in the neighbor's can, leaving the neighbor holding the bag and responsible for pay for it with one of their bags or be fined. So again, that's something that I think will, will, if that sort of bad behavior occurs, we'll have to figure out how to address it. Can shredded paper be included in recycling?
I think right now, if you put it in a paper bag and you staple your paper bags, but it's paper with paper altogether, then yes, you can.
Janice Wolf says, Kristen, glad to know I'm not alone in tearing out the grease spot on boxes in order to recycle. I also cut the labels off plastic bags to clean recycle those. I'm not sure I'm always as diligent with those, but I do collect my, my film plastic bags and take them to the, to the bin outside Giant.
Yeah. A, a lot of people are not aware that you can recycle plastic film. So your other plastic bags and plastic film, you can have your bag of bags. That's actually what these bags are filled with. This is all plastic film in here that eventually will go to Jan, Safeway, Home Depot, Lowe's, Target. They all take plastic film for recycling.
Yeah. And it is an extra trip. You just have to take it there and put it in the bin. So we just collect a bunch and then take a punch all at once. Clarifying about kitty litter disposal, can we put a non-city small bag of litter within a larger city bag? It doesn't work for us to dump kitty litter in our kitchen trash each day because it makes the entire kitchen smell.
Yes, you can do that. You can put any kind of bag inside the city bag. Yes, that's fine.
Claudia Jones, here's my concern. If the tipping fee recycling is lower than regular trash, residents may start throwing trash that is not recyclable into the recycling bin to save money. This will create a nightmare for the recycling folks. And that, they always already could be doing that. I think there's a system of inferior, to, to enforce that if needed.
Yes. And, and that's a question that has been answered. Contamination of recycling has not happened in the other jurisdictions in which this program has been implemented. So actually the contamination rate gets lowered because people are paying better attention to what is recyclable and what is not recyclable.
Lauren Rosenthal, thank you for answering every question so far. Each one of you are well informed and able to answer all kinds of questions. Excellent presentation. Thank you, Laura. And I think lots of knowledgeable people here. And I think, but we still come up with questions that we need to, to, to work on. So that's a good reason to have this, the, this extensive, extensive Q and A and, and think of things we may not have thought of. Did I understand you correctly that we can put compost into our own backyard? Won't that attract pests as well?
You can have a compost bin or a compost enclosure in your backyard. It's recommended that you not put meat, fish, cheese, dairy products in there because it attracts animals. But if you're just doing vegetable matter and you're doing the lasagna method where you have leaves, food, leaves, food, then it doesn't attract animals. I have had a backyard compost bin for 24 years right here in GHI. I have never seen an animal hovering around my compost bin.
And for the, for the meat and things like that, you can take those to the, the bins at, at Buddy Attic because those go to the commercial composting facility.
Or you can become vegetarian.
Or you can become vegetarian.
And you can also compost a lot of food scraps to feed worms.
Oh yeah, you can have.
For vermicompost.
And, and the city has actually offered free vermicompost bins. We still have some available. And I have a few backyard compost bins available too. They fell and they have a crack. They still work, but you can have them for free.
Okay. Also compliments from Joe Robbins for the excellent presentation and thanks. Claudia Jones, I use small bags. If I go the max trash sticker option, how many small bags can I put in my trash can or we, that we?
As many as you like.
Okay. So if they're the small bags, they can be as many.
Sure. If she has a max trash sticker and she's like filling up her regular trash can with five or six of the smaller grocery sized bags that are around five gallons, you can have as many as you want in there with your max trash.
Okay. Adrian Pachear also great town hall. Thanks for the clear information and Q and A. Elizabeth Mondragon, thanks for preparing this very informative meeting. Steve Skolnick, I think we, maybe we're getting to the end of the questions. From Steve Skolnick, good job explaining and fielding the many questions. Question for Chris Herman, what is green drop?
Green drop is a company that collects used items, household items, furniture, clothing, et cetera. And then they redistribute to Purple Heart and other, other organizations like that.
They used to have huge trucks that would come to. They used to have huge trucks that would come to the Roosevelt Center.
Yes.
Parked there on a weekend day, week, weekend day, and people could bring things to donate.
Yes.
Okay. Are the ties built into the bags or separate?
They're built in.
Okay. I think Claire Morris is, is saying, you analogize unit based trash pricing with public utilities as does Way Zero, as though this analogy settles the question of fairness. I respectfully dissent, the analogy is problematic and shouldn't substitute for an actual argument justifying why we should shift to this new way of structuring the trash tax. I don't think we have time here to sufficiently explore the problems with this analogy. I mentioned previously that we support free public education regardless of our actual use of its services. One could add innumerable examples of other public services paid for by all regardless of individual use, and that is absolutely true. I think I would disagree that we should be, that, that, that public education is a public good. I think, I think that public waste collection is not a public good. I think there was another, there was a way that Kristen Brown has phrased it, Mark, Mark Dancy, I think that maybe you could, it's that, I think there, there is a fundamental difference between what is a public good and what is not. And, yeah.
I think, I think no one, no one benefits from a digital path. So we all benefit, we can argue how much more we benefit from one worry, from education, but more trash doesn't benefit anyone, so it is in fact public bad, we'd rather have less of it than more. So hiding the cost of it, disentertives is looking for alternatives that we're talking about here.
And also, when we, when we pollute or have too much garbage or don't take care of the environment, the people that it impacts the most are the disadvantaged. And, yeah, it's, 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 it's indirect and people don't want to acknowledge that, but it's absolutely true that it, wealthy people can, you know, anyway, I'm done.
And then just a couple more, efficient and effective waste disposal is not just an issue of convenience, and it's an issue of public health and mitigating the risk of disease, especially after the pandemic. How do we measure that this program will be just as safe for public health as uniform weekly disposal? It still is weekly pickup.
Right.
So that is not changing. Comment, the Morse family has made many thoughtful comments, I would agree with that, I don't necessarily agree with all of them, but they certainly have been thoughtful. From Chris Herman, thank you for this informative meeting, for extending the planned time to respond to all of our questions. I expected questions, I'm not sure I expected quite this many questions. Jenny Jurling says, public waste collection absolutely is a public good, as is a way to steep with hazardous, hazardous substances like pet waste. I think the argument is not that waste collection is, trash is not a public good, that less trash is better, we're gonna generate some trash, but less, less trash is better for all of us. Ah, okay, note to panel, all questions attributed to Laura were in fact written by Michael, Michael Hartman, okay. And one, one last confusion, I'm confused, I thought that the max trash users would be only allowed to dispose of three large bags per week, but you just said they could dispose of limitless smaller bags, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, if they're in one trash can, you can have multiple smaller bags in your one trash can, which doesn't mean that you're gonna have 20 trash cans full of smaller bags. So the question was specific, they said, if I have multiple smaller bags in my trash can, will they be picked up with the max trash sticker? So the answer to that question is yes. You cannot have multiple bags laying on the floor, they have to be in a trash can. And just as long as it's the approximate volume of what would be the equivalent of one large 50 pound bag, separated into smaller ones. So the idea is the same, it's the volume of three large bags, not to exceed 50 pounds, even if you're divided them into smaller bags. I don't know if that made sense.
Trash bags are not always in bins with the current program, but they are supposed to be.
They're supposed to be.
So, yeah, the fact that they are not just, maybe people aren't, don't, unfortunately, people don't always follow instructions, but they should be in bins.
Hey, with the question about the, the number of bags, it's not about the number of bags, it's about the weight. Our, our public works employees, they're only human, they can only lift so much, so there are regulations that forbid them, we, we cannot, they cannot be asked to pick up more than three 50 pound bags. So it's not a question of the number of bags, it's really about the capacity of our workers to, to handle the weight.
And I think the volume to a certain extent as well, you know, that, that the three big bags, like we're, we're measuring these by, it's sort of using a volume measure of the, 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 the quantity of three big bags. Because we're, as noted, we're not weighing them all the time, it's just that, using that volume measure. Okay, I think we hit all of the questions in the queue, excellent. If you have further questions, I'm gonna stick, I'm gonna stick Luisa's information back up on the screen. So if you have further questions, there is Luisa's phone number and email address. Thank you, everybody, so very much for joining us this evening. If you think of something else, do please ask it, there will be other opportunities for conversation about this. And, and certainly more education, thank you, Mr. Dancy from Way Zero, thank you, John Jane and Luisa for putting together those, those slides, thank you to, to Josue and Mayor Jordan for, for joining as well and sticking around. Much appreciated, have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, I gotta stop it. Mayor Pro Tim Weaver, do you, do you wanna stay online?